I'm giving you the one minute warning. Thanks.
Okay, Bonnie, it's seven o'clock.
Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions. And I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's planning commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minnihahacounty.gov site, reviewing by the general public. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displaced on the screen. When this joint hearing is completed, the Joint Sioux Falls and County Planning Commission will adjourn and the next regular business meeting will begin to consider items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction with Sioux Falls. Any action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, March 3rd, 2025 at 5:00 P.M. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the Joint County Commission and City Council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at or after 5:00 P.M. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and joint meetings of the County Commission and Sioux Falls City Council are held at Carnegie Town Hall that is located at 235 West 10th Street. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? For the regular agenda, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the items shall be recognized by the chair, moved to the podium, and state their name and address for the record. Each member of the public will be limited to five minutes of public comment per item, and will only be allowed to address the commission once per item, unless they are called upon to answer additional questions from the commissioners. The planning commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. The first item, which is number one, is the approval of the minutes of the January 27th, 2025 meeting. I will need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion and second to approve the minutes of January 27th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
On the city side, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Same sign. Pass on the city side.
Thank you. Item number two is conditional use permit 25-10 to transfer one building eligibility from lots two and three, Lacy's Second Edition, the north half, to lot B of Lacy's Track Two, the north half, the north half, all within Section 35, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. That is the Mapleton Township. The petitioner and property owner is Glack Co. Company LLC that is located at the intersection of North Bonson Avenue and East 60th Street North. Kevin?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This application is for a transfer of a building eligibility. The transfer of the building eligibility will utilize, if approved, would you create an allotment for a single-family residence? A transfer is allowed with approval of a conditional use permit. The property is located east of the intersection of Bonson Avenue and East 60th Street North. The property owner owns several properties in the approximate 40-acre area, like right here, it's approximately 40 acres. It's surrounded by three sides by the city of Sioux Falls. The development history does take place over several decades, including two separate conditional use permits to allow the two existing residences here and here that were transferred in 1992. Later, more recently, these properties were subdivided off and annexed in 2006 and 2007. So as a transfer in the staff report, there are several specific criteria to every transfer. And I will note that generally speaking, the transfer request meets the transfer criteria. However, for the general conditional use permit criteria, I will kind of begin on that since I want to get more detail with those items. There's a total of six criteria for the general criteria of the conditional use permit. Criteria one, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the vicinity. This property is in the middle of a developing industrial property surrounded. The three existing dwellings were constructed prior to most of the development. Likewise, most of the industrial development started after annexation in 2007. Many of the vacant and unplanted lots still remain in the surrounding area. But generally speaking, low-density, single-family residential land uses are incompatible in close proximity to industrial land uses. Criteria number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses of the prominent areas. Again, this is an industrial area. Shaped Sioux Falls does have this as future light industrial land in the 2024 Future Land Use Map. In addition, the 60th Street North is identified as a Type 1 arterial road, and city staff comments confirm this. A new single-family dwelling in the area would create a conflicting land use of the area. In addition, it would be a benefit for the city to prevent premature low-density development in an area where services are already built for higher production. Criteria number three, the utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. If approved, the petitioner would be responsible to extend any new utilities. Drainage would not be significantly changed. There is access to the property through an existing driveway. Staff comments does include a description of the future development of 60th Street North and how that would affect the driveway. That'd be the city staff comments. Criteria number four, the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. As a single-family dwelling, this would be large enough to meet off-street parking. Criteria number five, the measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. Single-family dwellings do not typically create a nuisance, and the property will need to comply with public nuisance ordinance for Minnehaw County. And then finally, number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. This property is located in the transition area of the 2035 comprehensive plan. In that area, the outlook is to maintain the rural landscape until eventual municipal development. Goal number four of the future land use chapter of the plan states to promote the orderly development of unincorporated land that will likely to be annexed in the municipality in both short and long terms. And in this case, additional low-residential development in the area surrounded by land planned for industrial growth would not be conducive for the future for the future in orderly development of the area. So this time, staff has recommended denial, and I'll go just through a couple photos of the property. This is a little bit wider view of the area. You can see a little bit more of where the development started over here. Bonson Road has been paved, so it's ready for development on this side of that road now. Some pictures of the site, kind of the trees. I'm on the driveway, kind of looking into there. And this is just beyond the trees. You can see the flat area of land where the proposed property would be. And then this would be looking out in the highway there. That is currently a county highway and is access is administered through the city on this. And then this is kind of looking towards the property from the really small sliver of land that is right next to this road right here. It's just a few feet wide. So I guess I'll bring it back to the map. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair, just how do we end up with a 15-foot-wide chunk of property there that goes all the way down there?
So in my little bit of research on the properties, this land right here was purchased by the Sioux Falls Development Corporation. And I don't know the details, but this Bonson Avenue was platted right after this, like, 15-feet tract. So I think it was a way to locate the street in the proper location, but I'm not entirely sure.
Any other questions for him? Guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Gary Van Reggenmutter, 3601 East 60th Street North. That 15-foot piece of land came into effect because when the city and myself and the development foundation met, I wanted a 15-foot buffer between my trees. I didn't want the curb to be right next to my tree grove. And I actually wanted to take a lot more land, and I had first option to take the land, but I gave it up so that Bonson Avenue could come through and be able to be the overpass that comes on 60th Street that goes over the interstate. It drops down, and they wanted Bonson Avenue to be on level, not halfway up the slope. So that's where the 15-foot come from. And 30 years ago, when I bought that land and we platted it, lots A or lots B and C, we already have city water ran into those lots and electricity ran into those lots. And we did the perk test to make sure we could build in those lots. So now that we have the building eligibility and we want to transfer it, I think I'm kind of, I'm at a loss as to, we build one more house up there, what are you going to have, maybe three more cars a day pulling out onto 60th Street? I can't see where that's going to be a big issue. I mean, we built so that we could, my family and I wanted to have, all the people that live up there are either family or friends. And we don't plan on selling the house. We plan on building it. My son, or my brother's got a daughter that's looking for a house. I've got a son that's thinking about moving back here for a house. So, you know, we've got enough drive there where that red line is on, well, it'd be on the bottom looking at the picture. That driveway goes all the way down past my house, and that can be widened out to where if we put the houses there, then they can pull out, get on that road, and go right out onto one existing driveway. And that's the only driveway between Bonson and the next road that's through the gully and up on the hill. I mean, I don't think you're ever going to wind up with a street with no driveways. There's two other, three other driveways on the other side of the road already. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience could address this item? Okay, commissioners?
I guess, Madam Chair, I can get us started with just the thought that usually we're pretty, at the county level, we're pretty liberal with people moving eligibilities around. I think this just happens to be a case in point for why we have joint jurisdiction, and there's obviously the city implication here and the city growth area. So I'd kind of be deferential to my city counterparts because we've probably seen dozens of these situations where we approve them with these same circumstances at the county level, but they're out in the middle of the county. So I think maybe the burden is on our city staff and city counterparts if you want to make the case for to build on, our staff recommendation was denial in the sense of the concordance with the comprehensive plan and the growth area. But I'd kind of let my counterparts make that case further if we want to go down that road.
Any other comments?
Mr. Commissioner, if it's okay, I'll speak up.
Go ahead.
At this time. I'll be the first to say, boy, I don't really love this 15-foot strip here. I feel like I don't have all the details on that. I'd love to hear more about the history of that. Having said that, with the information that we do have, I know that the city of Sioux Falls takes their comprehensive plan very, very seriously. We're going through the 2050 plan right now, and I've made similar comments about this before. It seems like a multiple-year process with a big advisory board, just tens of hundreds of hours. It seems like a public input, and it's a very intense and thorough process that we go through to ensure that we label future properties properly. And in this instance, we have a conflict where this is labeled industrial, and I think if we approve of this building eligibility transfer, we'd be doubling down on residential, which is not what is intended for this area. So with the information that we have tonight, I will be voting no.
Anyone else?
Well, that's what I was looking for. Thanks, Eric. I guess I can, if we want the county to proceed first, I think I'll make a motion to concur with staff recommendation and deny this request.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and second on the floor for a denial of conditional use permit 25-10. All those in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
On the city side, I'll look for a motion. I think we want to stay in the affirmative and vote opposite.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
I'll second.
I got a motion to approve and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. All those opposed, say yes.
Yes.
It did not pass on the city side.
Thank you. On to item number three. Any old business? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Fletcher?
Good evening. Fletcher LaCock, senior planner with City of Sioux Falls Planning Department. I'm here to provide you an update on the Shaped Sioux Falls 2050 Comprehensive Plan update. We've been working on it since May, and we've just finished up our second phase, which has been the public input. I want to go over the scope of the project, the schedule overview, the engagement feedback, overall key takeaways, and then what our next steps are. On the right-hand side of the page, this is how we kicked off our public engagement process, which was with a coloring contest. This is one of the winners chosen. They received a hat from the mayor and a note saying thanks. But what we're really looking at is we're planning for the future, planning for our kids, so what way to get them engaged than a coloring contest that at least gets them engaged and their families engaged. So here's kind of the project's scope that we had. We kicked off in May of 2024. We had our Phase One, which was basically the planning of how we're going to do our public engagement. And then we just ended our Phase Two public engagement with some presentations in January. And then we are now moving on to our drafting Phase Three. So we'll bring that, once we have a draft put together, it'll come back before this board for your review and recommendation. So with that Phase Two, the public engagement, we had 18 different pop-up events, and that's where city staff went to different I have a list of them, but we went to different places and engaged with the public on getting their input and also just getting the branding out of the project. We have an online website. We had over 1,700 unique visitors. We started out with some community listening sessions led by our consultant Confluence. We've had public visioning and neighborhood workshops, focus groups. And then the big one, we had focus groups and stakeholder interviews, actually reaching out to individuals in our community and getting their input on what is important moving forward, what do we need to plan for. And then the huge piece we had was our community survey, which was a statistically valid survey. We hired a group called ETC out of Kansas City, and they do a lot of the surveys throughout our area. Every long-range transportation plan, which is now called the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, includes a survey, statistically valid survey done by ETC. So they're really familiar with our area. And they got 541 responses, which really, they were only looking for 300, so they did get a lot of engagement and a lot of people interested in providing their input. So the pop-up events, and these were hosted by staff, and we just went out to the community and asked questions, had visual aids to get input. But we went to the National Night Out and kicked off River Fest, Farmer's Market. And really, our intent moving forward is to continue to go to these events throughout, even if we're not doing a big event like the Comprehensive Plan update, but just to keep that public engagement going in the future. The interactive website, so one of the things we had was social pinpoint, and on that website, people could say, these are the things I like about Sioux Falls. These are the things that need fixing. And then the last one we had is ideas, like, here's ways that we can improve the city. And so we got 547 contributions, and our consultant put together a memo, which will be available online soon, summing up those comments. But what they did here is that conservation and resiliency, housing and transportation are a lot of the big issues. And we kind of knew that, but it's nice to have everything that we're doing kind of reinforcing that these are the things that are important. Public visioning workshops, we had four of them at different libraries and schools, just to try to get people, you know, if they have a reason to, you know, to be in their neighborhoods and find out what the issues are in their neighborhood. So identifying issues and priorities and opportunities, and really doing like a strength, weakness, opportunities. And always forget the T, threats. And so doing that kind of analysis of what people think, you know, what's important to them. And so even getting into, I can't do too much on the survey, but here's just the general takeaway, like biotechnology and scientific research is something that people really talked about when it comes to commercial development. And then, you know, ones that we know about, daycares, senior housing, grocery stores, pharmacies, those are issues that have been coming up for the last few years. And, you know, we do know it's something we have to address. And then even what they do say, though, is current zoning regulations were not strict enough. So that's good news. We can always be more strict, but I think we're actually doing a good job. But that was one of the interesting things to hear back was maybe 22% believe they were not strict enough, our zoning regulations. Our consultant Confluence did a lot of stakeholder and focus group interviews, so 13 meetings with focus groups, and then 21 stakeholder interviews, and I think some of the people in this room were involved in those interviews to get input. And we have, you know, especially working with our regional partners, so the City of T, CCOG, or the Southeast Council of Government, City of Brandon, City of Hartford, Lincoln County, even reaching out to staff here to get input. But really looking at trying to get input from all areas, all different parts of the city and the region. So we did all this public participation. We're going to start drafting, but what are the key themes? Housing and neighborhoods. So people want more accessible housing, so that's not just affordable housing, but it's affordable housing for the amount of money that you make, is what it means, basically, rather than just saying it's affordable to those at the lowest level. Infill development, really pushing that, neighborhood maintenance, so investing in our neighborhoods. And then one of the things that we have seen with little developments like in neighborhoods, having neighborhood commercials, so that's restaurants and little services, little businesses that would be able to serve neighborhoods so that you don't have to leave or get in the car, or you could probably walk to it. So that's something we'll start exploring in the future. Transportation and mobility, excuse me, investing in public transportation. Not a lot of people use public transportation, but we all realize that it is an important thing that we need for our community. So really, you know, even though most people say, I own my own vehicle, they do recognize that people need public transportation. Pedestrian and cyclist safety, safety and traffic calming, these are things that, good things to hear when we're looking at our comp plan. And then conservation and resiliency, which isn't just environmental conservation, but it's looking at how do we bounce back from floods like we had last summer? Are we doing enough to plan for those? Economic and cultural development, really pushing mixed-use development. And then one of the things we heard a lot about was arts and culture and, you know, looking at getting an arts and culture master plan put in place. Community health and services. So this is an interesting one because comprehensive plans don't usually look at things other than land uses. But what we heard from people was that mental health resources and community centers are things that people find to be an important issue. So figuring out how our comp plan can address those will be an interesting challenge. Again, infrastructure and public health, road maintenance. And road maintenance, we're doing our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and that's where a lot of our transportation planning is, not really in the comp plan. But public spaces and amenities, that's something that when we're looking at how subdivisions are designed, including public spaces and areas. They call them third places where basically it's places where you don't have, it's public, it's somewhere you can go, but you don't have to spend money, right? So really good for teenagers and having those safe spaces in our neighborhoods. So moving forward, Phase Three is a draft plan. We already have meetings looking at our first couple of chapters, but we'll be meeting with our advisory committee, working with all of our partners, having a public open house. And then we'll be coming back to our planning commission and these joint jurisdiction planning commission, as well as having the city council and the Lincoln County Board and the Minnehaw County Board of Commissioners approve our Comprehensive Plan update. And with that, that's our city, our website. We will have presentations by our consultant and ETC, who did the survey linked on it, hopefully by the end of the week. But if there are any questions for me at this time.
I guess not.
All right.
Thank you, Fletcher.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Kevin, are you up next?
All right. So I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department again. I'll try to be brief because I know there's lots of people in this room, but we decided that we're going to bring on a couple of ordinance amendments to get some input early on in this. We're not making any decisions tonight. It's just kind of placing it in front of you and seeing where this is going to go. But I did see in that comprehensive plan review that Fletcher just did for adaptable housing, including ADUs, and that's going to be one of our proposals here going forward in the county's comp plan as well. So looking forward in the kind of draft plan, or the draft ordinance that was provided to you, looking at ADUs going as a conditional use permit to give a little bit more control over the kind of extremes on either end of the ADU kind of abilities and what can be built and what cannot be built. Some things, including, so definition, this is based largely on the definition that's provided by the AARP. Some other definitions that change would be like two-family dwelling to make sure that it doesn't clash, to exclude accessory dwelling units from that. But to know what an accessory dwelling unit is, is really kind of names that I'll use for accessory dwelling units. It can be attached, they can be detached, but they're often like backyard cottages or attached garages.
or attached garages above the garage. Fonzie lived in an ADU. There are accessory dwelling units already existing in the county as well, and here's a picture of one that was existing far prior to the ordinance. So some of the things that we're looking at is requiring a platted lot. That way, when a accessory dwelling unit gets placed in a lot, if there was ever an attempt to try to subdivide that accessory dwelling unit into another property, it would have to go through an approval process and get, and that could be able to catch some of those that might attempt to do that, because the purpose of this is to remain accessory to the primary dwelling. Some maybe requirements around frost footings and making it permanent structures rather than tiny homes on wheels to kind of keep it in, in character with the county as well. Just looking at some of the things with attached accessory dwelling units, looking at a size limitation of 75% of the total floor area of the primary dwelling. And also has to maintain a current building code going forward. For detached, looking at 50%, a little bit smaller, to try, again, to try to keep that, that the aesthetics and the character of the rural area. With the one exception, the rural area has a lot of old farmhouses. So to try to work around, what are we going to do with the old farmhouse? Maybe it's in okay shape, we can, can work with it. To have some sort of a rule in the accessory dwelling unit to allow that farmhouse to be adaptively reused if it's a certain age. That way, it's not a back door for, okay, I know I have houses building, a large accessory, or large house, and that's going to be the accessory dwelling, but no, it has to be there for a long time. And then whether or not, I guess it's included in the draft to allow HUD code, which would be a manufactured home, that can be discussed through this, so whether or not we wanted to proceed with that manufactured home allowance to, as accessory dwelling. Remember, it will have to come in front of this board, so that would be something to consider on a case-by-case basis. It goes through some setbacks, I'll kind of skip through that, and I guess I'll hold it right there if you have any questions or comments about accessory dwelling units before I move forward.
Go ahead.
All right, so then the next thing we were looking at, so we just had a transfer request tonight, and as Joe Kipli mentions, like the county does quite a bit of these and fairly recognizes that it's fairly common. So transferring dwelling or building eligibility is, we're looking at changing the, the requirements. So right now, excuse me, this one. So it will require an ordinance amendment. We're looking to change it so that way the building eligibility is, need to be contiguous, so the property has to be touching as well, but they do not have to be under the same ownership, which they currently have to be. So now you'd be able to transfer from one property to another with an agreement between the two property owners. This may, I just put up one photo here. This is a fairly heavily dotted area, so every red dot is an existing house, but they're already a lot used, but there are some that are still available throughout here. So by opening those up, maybe these can be transferred to somebody who has a large lot, who wants another development, and that would make it a lot easier rather than having to, to transfer land into one name or the other. So this is a request that we get quite a bit in the county, so that would be moving forward with a conditional use permit for that. So I guess, is there any questions on transfers?
Any questions for him?
I guess, Madam Chair, if I can have the privilege to go back, I actually had an ADU question for you. Since we're sitting with our friends from the city, and we've already had one issue today where we kind of took a little bit different tact that we wouldn't have if, but for the City of Sioux Falls and its growth area, can you imagine that we would maybe have a different approach to ADUs in the immediate vicinity around Sioux Falls? Or are we going to try to create a standard ordinance across our joint jurisdiction in our county? I mean, if it's a conditional use permit, part of me says we can just take it on a case-by-case basis and have that feedback from the city if they think it's not the proper use of a secondary residence on, but any thoughts on that?
I, I guess, actually, at this point, we haven't even talked a whole lot between staff, so if there is a need for, for having differing ordinances, that's very possible at this point, since we're at the very beginning of this. So yeah, if there is a reason that maybe to fit into the city's future code, that floor area for attached dwellings, for example, has to be smaller to meet their requirements or something, we could work with that, so that way the, the annexed accessory dwelling unit would meet the future Sioux Falls annexation.
Anyone else? Hey.
And I guess the other question that at this point would be, is if this is something we want to kick down the road a little bit and discuss again in the future, or if it's something we would like to set a hearing date with these or something similar to this and have a full hearing on it. And we could set that hearing date for March, I think it would be March 24th in the next meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, I'd make a recommendation to go ahead and set the date, move forward.
I second. Okay, I have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor on the county side?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
On the city side.
I'll make a motion to set the date in March.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All the same sign. Pass on the city side.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
On the city side.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn and second, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All the same sign for adjourned on the city side.
Thank you.